I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all. Okay, not only we start with the COVID update, but we have an extended COVID update today. So I'm going to go to number two real quick. We have Christian Ruder with us today from the New York Blood Center. Christian, you want to talk a little bit about the blood drive we have scheduled?
Hi, yes, um, thank you for having me. Can everyone, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so I am here to talk about the blood drive that's coming up about a month from now, January 20th, at the EMS building like this past summer. And I'm also here to talk about how we have a nationwide shortage going on right now. So due to the pandemic, the holiday season is typically hard in general this time of year, but with the new variants coming about and, you know, this, it's no matter what, it's scary for people, we are seeing a shortage. We've been doing, we've been working through this for 19 months now, and normally, most of the hospitals will have about a five to seven day supply of blood. And we're down to maybe one day, if that. We're canceling, they're canceling surgeries already, and, and so basically, I'm here to talk about how we are going through quite a shortage now. We are running at most of our, you know, community drives and schools, but we're still not fully back yet. So, so we really appreciate the support that we get from, from the town of Shelter Island, from the community. There is a lot of misinformation out there about donating blood right now. Donating, when it comes to donating blood, it cannot be, it's not transmissible through blood COVID. So, you know, people wonder, you know, am I going to give someone COVID or something that that doesn't happen? All our staff are fully vaccinated, we follow social distancing, and you can donate whether you are vaccinated or not, we, you know, either way, it does not affect, you know, the donation process or anything. So a lot of people wonder, you know, if I'm, if I just got vaccinated, can I donate if I, you know, there's no timeline, as long as everyone feels healthy and well, it's completely fine. But like I said, we are seeing, you know, a lot of people not coming back still, as many people as usual. So we are trying to raise awareness about this. It's no longer shortage just with us, it's like a nationwide epidemic. So we really are trying to get it out there to the community, how important it is to donate. We are giving away some things at the blood drive the day of. And, and we, I'm just making sure I cover everything here. And yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna give back to our donors, of course. Does anyone have questions? Like, I know, like I said, I know there can be misinformation when it comes to the pandemic, or any concerns about the blood drive itself that I can answer?
Kristin, could you just provide us with your last name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my last name is Ruder, R-E-U-T-T-E-R. I'm sure some of you have met Lisa Lee, she used to do the blood drives for years, and I've been doing this for two years now, but due to COVID, I only worked with, worked with the town this past summer. So I'm glad to be working again with everyone. But, but yeah, there's, our blood drives are socially distanced, all our staff are vaccinated, every, everyone has to wear a mask no matter what, and I know that just changed anyways, but since, since we've been doing blood drives, you know, we're requiring masks now. Everything is sanitized in between stations, we do, we, you know, beds, tables, tablets, everything. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have, but, you know, one donation can help up to three people, and in our country, about forty-five, forty-five thousand units of blood are needed daily to, to supply to all the, all the hospitals. So, you know, we're really hoping to get the word out there and get the community to come down next month. So thank you for, for having me, and I can answer, answer any other questions you may have in regards to the blood drive.
So Kristin, just to remind everybody, it's January 20th at the EMS meeting room from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Correct, yep. It'll be.
We'll have the signs up all around town for that.
Yes, and we do, we do have information on the flyers, we do prefer that people make appointments, so we can, you know, socially distance, but we don't typically turn away walk-ins, you know, we are in a shortage, so if we can take them, we will. We just, we just always make sure, you know, everyone's spaced out, there's not too many people at once. So, you know, if everyone can try to make an appointment, that'd be great. I can even send the link to Judy to send around to everyone, that takes you directly to make one, if that helps as well. If you have any suggestions, you know, we are, we did have a meeting, Judy and I, so.
Well, thank you very much, I know, I think I froze. Oh, I was just saying, thank you very much, I know Judy puts a lot of effort into this, and, you know, works closely with you, and we'll, we'll be in touch, and we will be, continue working. So I just want to thank you for coming on with us today, and have a very Merry Christmas.
Yes, you too, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, now we'll go back to the COVID update, we have our normal COVID update, then we have a lot of other things to get into with it also. Amber, you want to get us started? You're on mute, Amber.
Got to get back to, oh, oh, Zoom this time. Okay, so we are at 103, which is up three from last week, I'm actually surprised that it hasn't spiked more, considering the county seven-day rolling average of positives has gone from 7.2% to 10.1%. So that's a big jump, that we haven't seen that big of a jump in quite a while, as far as positivities. So I think it's rolling from the west to the east. And that's it for, for my point, but Joe will get into particulars.
We had a lengthy meeting this morning of the, of our emergency command team, and we involved a number of town employees, and we had a department head meeting also. So Joe, you want to get us started with where we really, where we are with COVID right now?
Sure, yeah, just giving a little more background of what Jared was describing, we are in the process of updating the town's policies for our mitigation techniques and effective today, as many of you have already seen, in-person meetings on all levels of the town, public in-person meetings are suspended with the reevaluation to take place in accordance with the governor's guidelines on January 15th. So committee, committee meetings, town board work sessions and work meetings, regular town board meetings. To fully remote, effective today, and this is in response to the, the Omicron variant, which has gained tremendous amount of traction, overtaking the Delta variant as the primary, the primary virus source for cases in our area. We've seen tremendous uptick in Omicron cases just over the last three weeks, it's now estimated to be approximately 90% of the cases in the New York metro area. So we're closely evaluating and monitoring updates with regard to mitigation techniques and, and different protocols for this new variant, but we're of the mindset that with the speed in which it is spreading, we may have to take additional preventative measures beyond, you know, the official guidance that's released from, from the state and from the federal government, and, and that's what largely a part you're seeing with our movement towards all, all remote meetings. The town's internal policy is going to be to continue to promote vaccinations, it seems now that booster vaccine amongst eligible populations is, is still considered to be the best mitigation effort against both serious disease and infection. But as a precaution, all of our mask-wearing protocols will be, to be enforcing mask-wearing regardless of vaccination status, and it's going to be both for public-facing and non-public-facing departments within the town. Other procedures that we're going to be changing internally will have to do with juggling remote workers, staggering, staggering shift times when possible, and generally reducing exposure both to our more vulnerable employees and also to, you know, non-essential staff. The, the thinking now is that this particular variant spreads significantly faster than previous variants, orders of magnitude faster in some cases, and is significantly more efficient at infecting folks. So we're being very mindful of this data as it's, as it's coming out, it's still very early to tell, but we anticipate that based on the existing trends, the increase in the number of cases that you were expecting a continued rise as we go through the holidays, and so we're trying to be proactive and take these preventative steps in, in advance.
Thanks, Joe. As Joe mentioned, we're trying to be proactive. From the very start of this pandemic, you know, that's the position we've taken, is we've tried to err on the side of caution, sometimes we put things in place before the state would. Chief, you want to talk to where we are with some of our procedures that we're putting in place?
Yeah, so I would remind the town and the community that you may see a slightly different forward-facing presentation from the town. So if you're trying, if you have to go see the town clerk or the building department, you should try to make, make an appointment, or try to do that, do that remotely, if, if possible. We are requiring our employees, regardless of vaccination status, to wear masks anytime they're interfacing with the public. Our public lobbies are open, the town installed during pre-Omicron days Plexiglas and partitions, so we should be able to do business as normal to the best of our ability, but if we can limit those public interactions, we would ask the public to do that. Supervisor, I believe you're going to talk about some of our other, other departments as we go forward, but Amber kind of hit on it largely, and if the screen share is open, I would just share some graphs to kind of give people a feel. Newsday does a, does a great job in, in putting out graphs. So if you look at this Long Island positivity rate, and I ran this graph from last year at the same time, we're pretty much back to where we were in positivities, it's 10.36, and this goes to December 15th, I would say that we're, we're right back where we were at this time last year. Unfortunately, the scary part for us is that this variant of the virus is moving much faster, we expect, you know, what they would call a wave of, of cases to, to come forward, I think a lot of us in the community are seeing that. So we are trying to get out ahead of that as much as possible and take some proactive changes. The only thing that I added is I looked at the total hospitalized on Long Island, I just looked at Suffolk County, and fortunately for us, I think our, our medicines, our protective measures are keeping those down. This variant seems to be less in, I guess, in conflict, or let, not create as many hardships for us, but still people are getting sick, we just hope that they're not hospitalized. One of the things from the start of COVID was that we wanted to protect our community in keeping hospitalizations down and overwhelming those systems. I think most of us have seen on the news, those systems are starting to get taxed a little bit right now, and you can look in this graph, but we hope not to go back to these numbers that were, that we saw last December, and, but we are kind of leaning that way now. So as this progresses forward, we are trying to stay on top of it as much as we can, we ask people in the community that are going out to obviously wear your masks wherever you go, if you're in that vulnerable population, caution yourself on going out to eat and doing those kinds of things where, where you feel you may be exposed. But we are trying to take proactive measures, our office is open, and so is town hall, if you have any additional questions that we, that we can help with, so that's largely where we're at so far, Supervisor.
All right, thanks, Chief. So what we're going to do is we're going to follow the governor's protocols through January 15th, and then we, actually, we're going to reevaluate after the first of the year, but we're going to keep everything in place through the 15th. So to begin with, you know, all meetings going forward will be virtual, again, we'll advertise them online, we'll make sure everybody has access to them, we'll follow the procedures that were set up originally for Zoom meetings, and we'll, we'll go forward that way. We're going to close the, the fitness center, we're going to close effective right now, we decided that, you know, rather than ask for people to have proof of vaccine and a booster, as Joe mentioned, this, this variant is, is a lot different, and the masking doesn't really seem to help. So rather than, you know, take chances or make appointments and have fewer people, and we're just going to shut down, and it's going to be an inconvenience for some people, but again, like I said earlier, you know, we're going to err and keep erring on the side of caution. So we're going to shut down the fit center, the recreation department. Bethany has always been following the school, you know, their schedule, what they do. Tomorrow, they have an after-school program in place that will be masked, and, and tomorrow's the last day of school, and after that, we will be shutting down the recreation through the 15th also. The senior citizen program, we're going to suspend all senior programs through the 15th, we'll continue with the Meals on Wheels, we'll do as we did last time with the people that came for the Congregate Meals or the Silver Circle Meals, we'll deliver those home meals in its place, we'll continue with doctors' appointments, or taking people to appointments they have. And everything else will pretty much be business as usual, we're going to try, as Joe mentioned, you know, we'll try to do as much as we can by appointment in the building with the building department, or with the tax receiver, or the assessors' office, or even Dottie's office, if you need to come in, you know, it's, it's not that hard to make a phone call and just tell Dottie you're coming in before you get here. And that's that, I think that's pretty much where we are going forward. Amber, you want to talk about the, the quick test we have scheduled for tomorrow?
Yes, and also, in addition to the rec programs, adult exercise classes are also being canceled, so just to make sure we cover everything. The school has approximately 150 rapid tests that are expiring later this week, so rather than letting them go to waste, the school is making them available to the public. As Joe mentioned, the incubation period has, is grown less for COVID, you know, for the Omicron variant. So for those who are going to be seeing, you know, elderly parents or traveling to see family, things like that, this makes a test, a rapid test available. It's going to be for those who are asymptomatic, community members, if you are experiencing symptoms, you should go to your doctor's office or an authorized testing site, rather than what's taking place. It's going to be tomorrow from 12:30 to approximately 2 o'clock, it's going to be first come, first served, it will be at the community center, which some of us still call the Legion Hall. And what will happen is whenever, when you come up, and an employee will give you a time card, like your number, your test number, and the time, and you'll, you can wait in your car until you're called, and come on in, and then get tested, you'll wait 15 minutes to see what the results are. If you do test positive, the result, the positive result must be reported to the state, but it's not an authorized testing site, so if you do test positive, even though results will be reported, you should consult with your doctor as to what, you know, what's happening. And, yeah, I think that's it, you will need, while you're waiting, you'll fill out a card that just gives name, address, and phone number.
And again, there's no appointments, so don't make any phone calls.
Just add to that Supervisor, Dr. Potter has extended testing days now, so he is testing in his office by appointment on Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So if for some reason you need to test, besides that, or come away with a positive enough to follow up, his office for his patients is doing extended testing.
Okay, anybody else on? Joe, thanks for all your research on this one. And again, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, from the very beginning of this, you know, people chose to, you know, go out to Shelter Island to their second homes, or to stay here because it was safe and they knew they could, you know, feel protected here, and we would just want to continue that and make sure that everybody watches out for themselves and their neighbors, and, you know, stays safe and, and stays smart.
Jerry, I just wanted to say a couple of things. Number, number one is, the new variant, the Omicron is, you know, is, has tripled in a week. Seventy-three percent of all Americans now have at least one shot of the vaccine, however, 20% of Americans have received the full initial dose plus the booster. That means that 53% have not. I would like to caution all elderly people or high-risk people, that if you haven't gotten the booster, just because you feel as if you've got the two initial shots here in the school months ago, six, seven, eight months ago, you are still very susceptible to these new variants. I would urge all senior citizens and people at high risk to go out and get the booster shot, because the, you want to be as protected as you possibly can from these new variants. We can rest assured that this new wave, which started three weeks ago, is going to continue throughout the holiday season through January and into February, and the numbers are only going to get bigger. The president is making available a half a billion rapid tests today. That should have been done weeks ago perhaps, because people want to travel, they want to be able to have access to a rapid test, so they know, they know they're not infecting family and friends during the holiday season. We're learning as we go, and we need to continue to be patient, we need to continue to, to encourage people to get vaccinated. And particularly are most susceptible, and I'm concerned about, you know, any loss of life. The other thing I'm concerned about is the health and welfare of our medical staff across the country. There's a lot of people that are, I saw in Wisconsin, that the, the medical staff took out a full-page ad begging people to get vaccinated and get their boosters. We're, we're demoralizing the medical community here, we're also impacting people that need routine surgeries and medical treatment because they're being postponed because of COVID. I just plead with people, use good common sense, if we're not all in this together, we're never, ever going to solve this issue and this problem. So I, I just think that you have to do some real soul-searching, this is not a political thing, this is not about being an, you know, following a political, this is medicine, and you need to find and seek people out that you can trust, and get the right information, and protect your health as well as your loved ones, your family and your neighbors, and your coworkers. That's my pitch.
All right, thanks, Jim. Okay, next on the list, we have town dockage, the chief wanted to talk, or the Bay constables are going to talk about dockage for the, of the town vessels, both the police department and the fire department?
Yeah, Jerry, I can lead off, and then I'll, then I'll turn it over to Bo.
Okay.
So, in, during, so twofold, one is, with the transaction that's occurring at Jack's Marine in the Hard West, or the fire department keeps an emergency deployment vessel at that location for water emergencies and fire suppression on the waters, they are going to need a space going forward to keep that boat. During the busy summer months, we have need, especially on weekends, our, our primary calls for service are either on the north side of the island between, you know, Greenport, North Ferry Terminal over to Shore Road, and then the other primary area is the West Neck Harbor and Bay Area, of which we have a boat there. We, we often return our boat to Cockles Harbor, and not to say that that doesn't have its own concerns, but largely on the weekend, we turn, we primarily split the island north and south. So we have a need probably to have a short-term location to keep an emergency police vessel. So Bo and I connected with fire service, and Bo's going to outline a plan to put a dock in the, in the Deering Harbor area that can support both fire and police need. The fire department was renting a space for a while, so it'll take a few years, but the cost to fabricate what we need, in the end, will, will, will pay for itself in a couple of years. So Bo, why don't, why don't you take over, if you're gonna, I'm assuming you may want to share your screen just to give an overview, so Christina might be, need to know that.
Okay, yeah, it looks like I might have a share, so, like, like the chief said, basically, we're just looking to try and, and create a permanent town emergency services dock in Deering Harbor, we're looking at Volunteer Park as the, the potential location for that. As the chief mentioned, the fire department is looking at, at some changes on the horizon with their ability to keep their, their vessel where, where it has been, and really just in general, from, from, I think, a good management standpoint, we are, you know, we're, we're continuing to pay, we, we meaning the taxpayers in this circumstance with the district, are continuing to pay for a service that we, we really, as an island, have the ability to, to simply implement and have our own, have our own dock. We've already pursued this through the police department this past year at Greases Lane, and then obviously on the horizon is slight alteration to Conings Dock, to be permanent homes for the two police boats we have. With that in mind, Deering Harbor is, has really was been the home of the, the fireboat, I think as an agency, we rely on them having their asset permanently detailed to that location, it gives us a pretty broad coverage of the island as a whole, we can always respond to an emergency pretty quickly from any of those three locations. So with that in mind, and again, looking towards, obviously having an alternate location for a police boat, as the case may be, we would like to install a, a ramp and a floating dock in the northeast corner, and I'm going to just share my screen here with you, hopefully. If you all could see that, hopefully. This section right over here in the northeast corner where my mask is going around in circles, that's a, just a rendering that I did of, of what it could potentially look like, actually have another, to get that other one up. Anyway, what I've done here is, I took a scaled version of a dock that's actually from right over here, the, the town dinghy dock that already exists, superimposed that over on the image to the left here, and then I took scaled versions of the police boat, which is on the right here, and the fireboat on the left, and plugged them all in to give you sort of a bird's eye view of what it might actually look like. The idea here is that the fireboat would be permanently stationed on this western side where there's a bit more deeper water, and then this inside edge would be the, the temporary home for the police boat, as a police boat as needed. The intention is that this dock would be solely limited to emergency service use, and not available as a dinghy dock or any, anything like that. Just switch, I have a second version of that, which just shows it in a different. There you go, this is just oriented perpendicular to the existing dock there, give you a little better handle on, on another view. There you go. This is just oriented perpendicular to the existing dock there. Give you a little better handle on, on another view. Right now, this is depicted.
I'll just dumb it down a little bit so everybody knows. Look, we're on Bridge Street. The top of the stores is Jack's Marine right now, Bliss Department Store and, and, and our current town dock across from Pecose's is, is right there. So everybody has a feel for, for where, for exactly where we are because we are zoomed in a little bit.
Right, right. Sorry about that.
No problem.
So the, you know, the intention is just basically have, have a ramp that comes off of the bulkhead that's already there. Get us out into some deeper water and then have a, a stable platform to, to tie up to and work, work from. This is depicted as an eighteen-foot ramp with a twenty-foot float that's six feet wide. We would look to do a twenty-foot ramp and a slightly wider float just for more stability. That's somewhat technical in nature and doesn't really change a whole lot of the plan. There's been a couple of concerns about, you know, general depth and, and utility of the water in that area. I think that working with, with Brian and, and obviously whatever marine contractor, as the case may be, I'm, I'm confident that we'll have plenty of water there in virtually all situations. That's the intention of pushing that float out a little bit further. I've already spoke with Brian Sherman and sort of got the ball rolling. Obviously, there's a, a application permitting process that we'll have to go through, so I have the next steps for that. We haven't executed starting that exact process yet because I wanted to obviously make sure the town board was at least generally on board with the concept. We're looking to split the cost between the police department and the fire district. And then ultimately, the, the resulting dock would become a town marine asset owned by the town. Obviously, for the sole purpose of emergency service use.
Oh, one of the other things that you didn't mention, and I found this out just recently from Brian, was that there is either a resolution or whatever went with the sale of that property was that the only, the only structure that could be added into the water was for this specific person, purpose, excuse me. So we are in line with what Volunteer Park was intended to be used for and to have an emergency platform for police or fire service. And just if you weren't clear, you know, the fire, the fire district is in support of this and, and obviously it's a need for their vessel.
Right. I spoke with Chief Ryder this morning. He said that he wasn't going to be able to make it today. But he, although he's the, the chief of the department, ultimately this falls to the district as a, as an expense. And he assured me that he's had a conversation with the, with the commissioners. I think they said last night was the meeting. Amber, maybe you, you know about that. And in, in his opinion, he expressed to me that the district was on, on board with, with moving forward with this.
Yeah, from the district's perspective, it looks like we'd recoup our expenditure, you know, annual expenditure over a couple of years. And then it'd be a savings to the district and thus the tax, taxpayers.
So if it's all right with the town board, you know, we would like to proceed with, with the permitting process and, and, you know, trying to get this floating, you know, hopefully to have it in place by the spring.
Any questions for anybody?
Just, just one quick. Is there, Bo, is there proposed dredging there?
No, not at this point, Albert. The, that's the purpose of, of pushing that ramp out a little bit further than it was. And then ultimately, near the, the, the locating the proposed dock towards that northwest corner of the, the bulkhead. It's actually the deepest water in that area because it's sort of a little bit of a natural channel there that goes into Chase Creek under, under First Bridge. The other advantage of putting it up in that area is we're going to remove ourselves as far as we can from the commercial application that Jack's has right now and, and may have moving forward. So people are hopefully less, less inclined to either mistake it as a, you know, a product of, of that marina or use it to try and get back and forth for those, you know, accessing those businesses.
Thanks, Bo.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just had a quick question as far as security, making sure, because it is now like, it's not going to be attached to private property. It's not going to be attached to public property, just measures to be taken to secure the boats and making sure the public just doesn't wander in, you know, wander onto the boats.
Yeah, so I, I can't speak really specifically for the, for the fire department regarding that. But, you know, we have, the two police boats are currently kept in on public property at Grace's Lane and, and Conans Dock. And while there have been a, a couple of security concerns, I know that, that the police department has on, on the agenda improving security at both of those locations by installing security cameras. And obviously, you know, we secure the vessels every time we leave them to prevent any unauthorized use or anything like that. So I, I would say that there's, there's probably a high likelihood that we would, we would look to, to go that route down there as well. Have some sort of security camera installed at some point there.
Okay, can we give them the go-ahead to continue the permitting process?
Yes.
Okay, you got it, Bo.
Thanks, guys. We'll keep working on it.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is a, a follow-up from last week. We had the report from Lombardo Associates about the wastewater treatment plant. Joe, did you have any follow-up, any, anything we needed to discuss or?
No, I was hoping to make this time available for more Q and A if, if there were questions from the board or, or the audience. And the only update I have in terms of progress is that we have ordered and commenced soil samples at the, at the airfield to, to further analyze what the, what the conditions are and, and understand if, you know, if we run into any roadblocks in terms of the soils there for drainage or, or water, water table depth.
Joe, it's BJ. Um, Joe, I have a, a question. I've just attended a couple of meetings since last week, you know, various committees. And so these questions just are out there floating in the zeitgeist. So the question, one question that came up kind of repeatedly is, I know it's a three-inch pipe. What would be the, is there an estimate of the maximum gallons per day that that pipe can handle? I think the genesis of this question is if we expand this system and add more hookups to lower the, it's a kind of a high cost per hookup right now. So, you know, so in looking forward and, and, you know, down the road maybe, you know, that's a, a way to justify the cost if we can add hookups from already existing properties. Let's just make that assumption. What's the limit?
Offhand, I don't know what that number is. It's, it's something that can be relatively easily calculated for this type of system where solids are contained onsite and we're looking at liquids only through, through the, the main. Generally, the capacity is quite high. So when considering the potential for everybody else who's situated along that route, you know, we would look at that as the potential maximum for that installation since, since they're located there. As far as additional users beyond the proposed route, we've not done any analysis and I don't think that part of our scope would include to do additional analysis for, for what that capacity could look like. But in most cases, the change from say two inch to three inch don't represent any significant cost for, for laying the initial main. And, and, you know, that's certainly something that we can consider as we enter the design phases. Is looking to maximize potential capacity even if it's not needed at this time.
Joe, along, along those lines that, that BJ just questioned, is it my understanding that this is being financed partially by the DEC, or to a degree? And, and it's strictly a wastewater, a town, a municipal wastewater facility that would preclude any residential hookups?
That's right, but the two points are, are mutually exclusive. So the DEC has provided the grants to, to commence and complete this project, but the funding does not restrict us from, to a particular user base. That's the scope that we proposed in, in the grant application. And that's sort of a strategic decision that the town had made in the, in the planning phases of this project to limit the users to the municipal buildings in this, in this specific locale of the island.
Okay. I had a couple of other questions if that's, if, if you don't mind, or everybody could.
Al, Al, I'm sorry. Before you go on, Joe, I'm not clear on that answer. Are you saying then that for the purposes of the study, there was a limitation to the municipal buildings? For the purposes of the use of the system, we could, you, we could hook up non-municipal buildings. Is that correct?
That's correct. What, what I was referring to with Al's question about the DEC funding is that the, the DEC providing funding, the grant funding for the study does not impose any restrictions on who the users are of the system. We proposed the project to be the municipal buildings and that's why the scope of the project includes only the municipal building. So there's no restrictions or strings that come with the funding source. That was an internal strategic decision that the town had made.
Thank you.
Then if, if I may ask, just a couple more questions, Joe. One, have we checked the original legislation to, to make sure that we could put this treatment facility on CPF property?
Yes, the initial, the initial legal review is that at the sites, because there were a number of sites that we, we considered, some CPF, some, some not. But that there was no legal, legal language or restriction on those parcels that would, would bar this, this particular use. And I, I would defer to Bob DiStefano for details about those. That's, that's, you know, outside, slightly outside of my office purview. But at least initially, that was a review that we conducted to qualify these sites for consideration.
Al, are you done?
Essentially exactly the type of project that the state legislation was looking for, for these CPF properties. It's a water reclamation project. You know, falls, you know, squarely within the, the requirements.
I mean, the, the initial, my interpretation, the initial CPF program was for water recharge.
Correct.
So how, this doesn't really fit in with water recharge. I'm not, I'm not questioning the legislation. If you've looked at it, then that's.
Yeah, when they brought in the water quality stuff, they allowed you to have water quality issues as well. Maybe the same as essentially putting an IA system in.
So you, you're talking about the twenty percent or the CPF fund?
Yeah, this, well, the twenty percent is within the, the CPF law.
Yes.
So it expanded what you're allowed to do to record include water quality.
Okay, all right. I know there is the twenty percent funding for water quality improvement projects, but I didn't know if they, if that would overlap on the CPF property.
It was also a part of a, a, a larger piece of legislation that, you know, you know, primarily we use it, we're using it for the installation of the IA systems and the grants. But it really just expanded the entire scope of what the CPF could do.
Okay. I just had one more unless you wanted to jump in there, BJ, or?
Kind of do because it's the recharge. It's, it's ties in with this recharge question. Again, brought up in, in my meetings is, was this idea of recharge now. P O, what's his name? The engineer, P O, kind of poo-pooed the idea, no pun intended, that, that any, that, that the efflu, that there was a significant amount of recharge to be gathered from, from what will be six thousand gallons per day, kind of miniscule in terms of the overall problem in the center. But other people, including I believe on the Water Advisory Committee, have said, no, we need to capture and, you know, put back into the ground all the clean, clean, cleanish water that we can in the center. And so to move this away from the center, to not use, let's just throw it out there, Satcham's Woods or the fire department, would be kind of a missed opportunity. And that being said, I, 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 I can see the pipe going both ways, like, you know, sort of like there's this one way out to the field, out to Kleniwichus, but how about, you know, down to Satcham's Woods? And if you want to hook up, let's just say down to one fourteen could come up to Satcham's Woods. Anyway, you know, that's going a little bit further. But, but this idea that any recharge of the system in the center should be taken advantage of because it's, it's necessary.
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think that's a very, you know, reasonable concern. My, my position on, on the recharge and the general feeling towards a relocation of the recharge areas that we really have to look at a benefit cost analysis here for what, you know, what do we value in terms of recharge and what's the sense of scale that we're talking about? Generally speaking, the volume of water, and this is pretty aligned with what Pio Lombardo I mentioned, the volume of water that we're talking about treating and relocating to the airfield is, is relatively insignificant when we're looking at recharge potential of particular sites or generally what a given area, a unit area recharges in a year on the island. And so when we're looking at the broader perspective of the recharge aspects here, you know, what are we putting into the ground? Like, I would, I would, you know, push and emphasize is more important than how much we're putting into the ground. And in this particular case, we're not talking about a lot of volumes. So this volume is not going to have any significant impact on the, the groundwater flow patterns or it's not going to significantly change or have any detrimental impact on the quantity of recharge we would normally receive in the center. But the main benefit is that we're relocating out of this more troubled area of the watershed, any contaminants whatsoever. And so that in my mind is the really big benefit. Recharge is not so valuable to a local user base if you're putting into the ground other contaminants that will then be recirculated to other groundwater users, you know, in, in the drinking water capacity. And that's the real opportunity here is that we have the ability to relocate where we recharge. And it's not to say that we're not recharging. This is not a direct outfall into Cockles Harbor or into the bay. It's still subsurface recharge to another portion of the island. In fact, you could even argue that, that's portion of it is falling into the same sub watershed that it may, it may flow into if it was located in the center. I'm referring specifically to that subwatersheds map that Lombardo Associates had presented where, you know, right at the center of the island, pretty much where all these municipal buildings are is the top of the mountain. And if we were to recharge here, it could sort of go downhill in any direction. I think it's a safe bet, given the margins of error and the accuracy of those sub watershed plans, that had we located the, the recharge area right here in the center, a good portion of that is going to go to the same sub watershed area that the airfield is in now. And one benefit of, of not doing it in the center is that it would bypass all of that time it would spend in the center aquifer. And it would also bypass the, the relatively heavily concentrated residential area between one fourteen and the airfield now. So I think there's a huge advantage to the airfield simply in that we're taking any contaminants. Although we know there are significantly reduced any contaminants and moving them out of our primary drinking watershed here in the center.
Joe, BJ before had mentioned the, the potential for future expandability. Is there any value to one site as opposed to the other with regard to expandable, expandability of the system?
Yeah, certainly. And we touched on this, you know, the space aspect when we had been citing these, you know, the, the equipment. And, you know, the, the town, if the town wants to pursue and is, and is, is cost-conscious or insists on putting the treatment and recharge in the center, you know, that's a strategic decision for the town. We know that it's technically possible, but it's certainly, it's certainly not as good or as wise of a, of a choice when we have a, a longer term, more sustainable option like the airfield. One major advantage of the airfield is that there is a lot of space. Any of the other facilities that we were looking at in town, namely the, next to the fire department or in the vicinity of the library, they're relatively space constrained. And the other aspect of them that's makes those. And the other aspect of them that's makes those particular locations less advantageous is that they're uphill from any other potential new user. The airfield happens to be uh downhill from from many other directions of potential expansion, which greatly simplifies and enhances the possibility of added users if we wanted to go that direction. We have a force main, a low pressure force main that takes the effluent from uh the gravity fed concentration point, which is around the vicinity of the back of the library in the Legion Hall. The only reason that's uh required to be a pump station is there's a slight increase in elevation going down one fourteen from there. So although the whole main is noted as low pressure, it's primarily gravity fed uh just a few hundred feet down one fourteen, more or less once we pass uh, you know, right around where the islander is. So that's when generally it turn transitions to all downhill grade uh to the to the airfield, so you know, we have a a low pressure force main noted, but the reality is the majority of that run is downhill, and if we were to center a site up here at the top of that hill, that any new users would have to have their affluent pumped in the opposite direction back uphill, so there's a couple of expansion related advantages to to the airfield.
Joe, I have a couple, a couple of questions, I'm not sure if I'm on and you can hear me.
It's Michael.
Um. It seems like a lot of engineering was done accordance with the the grant. And that's concentrating on the municipal buildings. But there is obviously an advantage to the users along the route that on the main takes. And toward that end, can you um talk about the need or whether you are satisfied that anticipating some growth, and I think some growth in the center, given its current condition of a lot of uh em- empty lots and blank storefronts would be favorable and to be able to plan in for in future connections of that development, are you confident that you have enough information from the study that was done to date that we will have the capacity to support future development along that corridor? Is it a four inch pipe, but is it a five inch pipe? I mean, it seemed sort of a knee jerk reaction, not on your part, but on the consultant's report, saying, yes, we can make a pipe bigger. Is further engineering study required in order to nail down the expansion capability of the system?
Yeah, thanks, Michael, we we spoke about this briefly in terms of pipe size just before you logged on, but uh the general consensus is that in the design phase, we can put a hard number as to what a three inch pipe can, you know, can handle in terms of maximum flow or a two inch pipe. Generally speaking, this type of system uh with effluent only, liquid effluent only traveling through the pipe. Uh there's a large, relatively large capacity for what's, you know, perceived perhaps as a a relatively small pipe. Uh but as we enter the design phase, you know, those are the types of numbers we're going to fine tune and um and sharpen our pencil on because, you know, that's uh that's sort of the the gorilla in the room is if you're going to spend that much money for uh trenching a two inch pipe, uh you know, generally speaking, it's um it's not a significant increase in price, sometimes if any, to go to three inch pipe, so part of the design process will be not only finding those uh areas for efficiency but uh you know, it'll be e- engineering sort of the the economics of that and and um I I had mentioned yesterday in the W A C meeting that uh the proposal we put in front of the town board last week uh was not, was not based on finding necessarily the cheapest or most cost effective uh project, we looked at this from a a very much long term sustainability aspect. Where we put forth what we thought was the best project that made the most technical sense uh and that offered the most sustainable long term solutions. And it was our thinking that, you know, we we'd hand off what we thought as engineers were the was the best bang for your buck and what made the most sense. Uh but if the town, you know, wants to elect towards uh changing the the project to include a, you know, a treatment site closure to the center of town, whether it be for cost reasons or for for others, you know, that's a strategic decision for our legislators to make. You know, in conjunction with public outreach, but the proposal that we put forward was primarily based on what we thought uh was the was the best option for the town from both an environmental standpoint uh a sustainability standpoint. And and again, you know, on some level, what makes the most financial sense, even though it may be the most expensive.
So toward toward that end, I'm going back. I appreciate the detail of your answer, but going back to the to the question of how um accessible this line is in the area where it is functioning as a force main. Um what type of site specific infrastructure or pumping is required to to get into the force main in those?
The same uh onsite uh solids collection is needed for every for every potential user. So a septic tank that uh contains solids allows for settlement and only allows for liquid uh liquid effluent to pass through, that would be required for every potential user. And in areas where they may be located uh on a section of the force main, an ejector pump and check valve would be needed to connect into that force main. So if being located along an area of uh of pressurized, you know, forced main wouldn't bar you from being a user. It would just require uh, you know, combination of check valves and ejector pumps to get you in. Uh that's not uncommon, there are many systems that have uh pressurized mains to transfer effluent and and that's a relatively common practice to uh to connect those parcels, uh this happens in lots of instances where there's elevation changes on properties. Uh people have similar type of um of systems in their home, if they even have, you know, basement level uh bathroom fixtures and and they need to raise the liquids to get them out of the house.
Is is it, is it correct to say that there is a a savings in the in- onsite infrastructure? Um in terms of, I guess, the leaching component of an onsite system that you are eliminating that and flowing into the into the uh liquid main? For the lack of a forced liquid main, is there a savings in terms of the system that would be required onsite? Is there components that would be uh uh no longer required with that asset of the pipe?
I'm I'm not sure I understand your question completely, but there, if if I am, uh there would be the potential for a user who had an existing septic system to disconnect and leave that septic tank in place, connect directly into the force main, but I I don't know that I would advertise or count on any sort of savings in that regard, it would be very unique to the property. Uh you know, the the location of the sewage lines from a particular structure would have to would have to align well with connecting to the route, so you know, the individual site requirements could be quite complicated, they could be simple, but it would be very specific to the site, so I I really couldn't couldn't speak to that, but generally, we wouldn't be u- utilizing or implementing any new technology that would be uh pipes and tanks and in some cases, the the need for a a pump and a check valve, but you know, those are all, I would hate to say off the shelf, but they're all established, you know, technologies and 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 equipment.
I I have one other question and and I won't, won't take any more of your time or any more of the group's time with regards to my questions. But it it has to do with a subject which is out out of the engineering project, but directly connected to it, and that is the subject of of water quality in in two categories of people, one is the municipal building. Um and I don't know specifically what the water quality in terms of drinking water and pa- um potable water is in those buildings. But is it possible or will it be considered um as an adjunct to the to the bond issue to address municipal building water quality with uh filtration? Um and second, um is it possible to consider? Um and this is really a board question, but a a fund to support a point of, point of, I guess, point of use, small scale. Um I'll say reverse osmosis water purification system for those for those people that live in the center that have problematic drinking water. Um that might have um nitrates that exceed the safe limits. Can, is it possible to set up a fund so they could, in fact, those people that are financially challenged um get um individual units, a a grant for individual purification point of source units within their home. Um so that we're attacking um or addressing the problem holistically. I mean, because I I did look after the presentation at the water flows and it was a little more favorable than the consultant said, I think we're in a range of twenty five to fifty years where the system will the water that is in the area of the center will will flush itself out. But that's a long time to wait for this system to have an impact on the drinking water side. And I'm wondering whether as part of this um undertaking, even though it's outside of the study, it is still within the scope of the general issues that we're trying to address. So that's a a big question and it may be a statement combined with with a question, but it would be a wonderful thing to to do, first of all, for the municipal buildings, but in addition to that, for those uh financially challenged users in the center to afford them the opportunity to have tr- clean, safe drinking water as part of the bond issue that would um be required to support this project. I don't know that you want to address that, Joe, if you want to throw it out to Jerry or someone else.
Yeah, I will, I'll just add, you know, I commend you for the the comprehensive and sustainable approach to to the problem, and that's that's exactly the kind of thinking we're trying to apply. Uh I will add, though, that, you know, a lot of those items, if not, you know, all of them are outside the scope of this particular project and um you know, beyond that, I would I would defer to uh the town board as to, you know, if they have any intention of support. You could provide some light on on those other programs you talked about, but um, you know, they're they're unfortunately not part of of this particular municipal wastewater program.
And Joe, one one thing on this, um kind of it's a little bit outside of the purview here, but um New York State just passed a constitutional amendment guaranteeing each citizen the right to go to clean drinking water. Um and I'm, we're not quite sure how that's going to shake out yet and what responsibilities that's going to appear upon town, the county or whoever else. Um but based upon that, it's certainly something that's, it looks like it's going to get addressed within the next decade or so.
Michael, I would just say that uh, you know, this whole sewage uh treatment uh study is just one piece of the puzzle. And, you know, yeah, we are also looking at, you know, the the quality of the water currently and how we're going to address that. And it's one of the things we're talking about with the uh with the W A C and also with the uh this new uh Shelter Island Water Group, Kevin McDonald's been in touch and I was supposed to get back to him last week, but I was a little under the weather. So so, yeah, we are looking at options, uh, you know, islandwide, you know, how we can uh provide, you know, better water now and long term.
Joe, if I could ask uh another question. What is uh at the point of discharge from the treatment facility? What is the level of clean?
That's a sort of an open ended uh question now, um you know, largely, the uh existing components of the system are towards treating uh you know, the the primary objectives for the town, which are, which is, you know, reducing nitrogen levels, but one key advantage to this type of treatment uh uh technique is that we have the ability to uh relatively easily change and adapt our treatment technique as we understand more about the flow, the the flow profile, so um we we would have the ability to add treatment for uh things like P F Os, P F O As, one four dioxane pharmaceuticals. Um once we understand more about what the flow characteristics are, you know, tho- those are the types of treatment levels that we can, that we can add uh at at relatively, you know, no change to the to the procedure or to the to the cost. Uh and and that's the, that's one of the key components here that this system is modular and adaptable uh to meeting those needs, so in terms of nitrogen, uh you know, there's been many instances where it's three or less. And um you know, but the goal obviously is getting less than, less than five.
P O uh pretty much guaranteed three. He's on record.
Yeah, yeah.
Just pointing that out.
Yeah, and that's and that's great, and you know, that's another, that's another advantage to this type of system, that, you know, it's once it gets into the realm of a of a professional engineer's design, you know, it comes with that kind of a, that kind of a guarantee. Uh just just like uh any type of a structural engineer would sign off on a a building design, you know, that's the, that's the certification, that's the warranty and the guarantee for performance. Um and and that comes with these types of, these types of treatment systems.
These these comments in the last uh two weeks have been terrific. The discussion has been terrific. Uh Mike, you, Michael, your uh point about this holistic approach of septic and water, terrific. But I think this represents a, you know, a major step, a first step. But a major step forward to to taking care of the number one problem that we have in the center of the town, that's cleaning up the nitrogen issue. So I wholeheartedly support moving forward with this initiative. Recognizing the fact that it is just a first step. But planning it in such a way that expansion is possible. And whether we put it a three inch pipe or a four inch pipe, I think that's something we think about, what I just Joe said, when we dot the i's and cross the t's on the final part of the project. Um but I think I honestly think this is um this is something that's gonna be a real shot in the arm and a real challenge for the town board as we move forward. Um keeping all these people together collectively, generating new ideas. Um looking at possible expansion of the the use of the system. But I, and I love the fact that, you know, Joe Joe has the ability, and I I'm a big cheerleader of Joe, as you can tell. Um e- explaining things in such a way that laymen such as myself and probably most of the people listening here today can understand. Um the advantage in my estimation of bringing down and getting the liquid out of the center of town, I think is huge. And I think the space provided down at the airfield is is really i- is a real plus. Um I think especially if um you're talking about, I I think the recharge opportu- uh opportunities are are minimal. I don't think it's going to have a a tremendous adverse effect on so any of the surrounding areas. Uh Joe announced and 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 uh Lombardo announced last week that, of course, I I'm glad that you moved forward uh with the soil sampling at the airport because that was a question that Meg brought up last week about the clay being in that area. I think that's a good first step as well. But um I I'm just excited about the project, think this discussion has been great. But uh, you know, I I I think we're moving in the right direction, so I'm excited. Hopefully, everybody else is.
Joe, if I remember correctly, the treatment level for the water that's going to be put back into the system is is going to be very high from the outset, correct? We're not talking about a a nitrogen level of of eighteen or nineteen, we're we're talking threes and fours.
Right, right, yes. Yes.
Right, yeah, that's right, and we're also talking about an inflow concentration that's substantially higher than the typical, you have typical uh level. Uh you know, we're looking well into triple digits for nitrogen concentrations for, you know, the uh for the inflow aspect.
Somebody else?
Yeah, can I ask a question? The uh uh Errol English, um from the Shelter Island Pilots Association. And uh, you know, I'm not a representative of the Shelter Island Pilots Association, but, you know, uh one of the things that we've been thinking about and talking about since this has come up is just that we'd like to be involved just to make sure that, you know, whatever construction happens or, you know, the placement of the system doesn't interfere with or prevent, you know, further operation of the airfield. And so that, you know, ideally you know, whatever ended up happening could benefit the Pilots Association and, you know, future projects that we'd like to do um that you are kind of for a a different discussion, but you know, there are things that we'd like to do with uh building airplanes with uh high school students or maybe other uh facilities that could include more community members, and I think something like this is exciting because you know, it has the opportunity to uh help service those goals that we have. Um but we'd like to be, you know, just kind of kept involved uh so that you know, we can make sure that what's happening doesn't negatively impact there.
Yeah, Errol, that's that's a very good point, yeah, and and again, this is just the uh, you know, really this was just a presentation to the public. I mean, now we're gonna, you know, we're gonna bring in the W A C, we're gonna bring in the C P F. We're gonna bring in, you know, green options, we'll bring in the pilots, you know. So, you know, just, you know, to get a feel for what they're So, you know, just, you know, to get a feel for what their thoughts are, what their concerns are, we'll bring in the neighbors. I see P J's here. You know, we'll we'll talk to, you know, we'll talk to everybody. Uh, this is just the very beginning of the uh of the process. Yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot more will come out when we get to the design phase of things. As far as the need for having more, you know, deeper discussions.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Joe, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And and staying on topic here, uh, the next is uh airfield discussion. And uh, the reason I put this on here was uh, we got a letter from one of the uh. Adjoining property owners concerned about the uh condition of the airfields. I'd asked Jim Coligan to go over and uh check it out and uh see what the status was. Jim, I don't know if you want to share your pictures or just give us an update or.
No, I I I did, I did share the pictures. I don't have the ability to do that, but.
Amber, do you have that?
Amber has them.
Yeah, while while you're talking, I'll find them.
Yeah, while while she's working on that. Give you a little bit of an introduction. The Kleniwichus Airport uh consumes seventeen acres. Town acquired the premises of open spaces to protect the aquifer and to maintain community character. As an island, there is a need for a place for emergency air transportation to land and take off. And this airfield has traditionally been used for that purpose. And obviously, most people realize that if we do have required helicopters to come in. Uh, they either go to Westmoreland or they go down to the airstrip, uh depending on where the accident has occurred. But I'm looking at the, you know, eight-page agreement that we have with the Shelter Island Pilots Association. The actual management of the airfield is under the direct supervision of the Shelter Island Pilots Association and at their expense. The last contract ran from um April first, two thousand seventeen. And expired on March thirty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, there's an option to have three-year renewals, which we did take that option and we we did kick that out three years. Um, by February first of the year of expiration, the Shelter Island Pilots Association. Shall notify the town in writing if its desire to. The license for an additional three years. Uh, we rent this out for one dollar in cost and they 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 pay that directly to the town clerk's office. The management plan itself, if you take a look at the management plan on page three of the of the agreement. Flight operations will be confined to town-owned seventeen acres. No such operation shall take place on land owned by Suffolk County. Obviously Suffolk County does own property around the airstrip as well. On the B, the airfield will be called Clinic Kleniwichus Airfield and will be called. Call so on all town maps and descriptive materials. C, hangar rentals will be retained by the Shelter Island Pilots Association. But used solely in connection with maintaining town property. D, storage of bulk petroleum products. Anywhere on the airfield, including the hangars, will be prohibited. E, Shelter Island Pilots Association will be responsible for ensuring that the airfield complies with such F A A. And Homeland Security regulations as are applicable to airfields of similar size and category. And finally, F. If it if it is important to have flight operations consistent with historical practices and the content of the airfield. Compatible with wildlife preservation, noise abatement, and sensitive to the wishes of the neighbors. And citizens of the town of Shelter Island. Therefore, what is prohibited? Glider operations, commercial operations, including flights or flying instruction. Helicopters other than what's used for medevac or for law enforcement purposes. Skydiving or parachuting, crop dusting, banner towing. Some people had, I remember about a year ago, thought that they were taking off from the air, that's forbidden here at the airport. Operating aircraft um having more than six thousand two hundred pounds all up weight. And touch-and-go landings, which is basically when you be training to become a pilot. Uh, eventually, what happens after initial of several hours of training? You'll go through a series of touch-and-goes to learn how to do that. That is forbidden there at the airport. This is strictly for for uh for pilots here on the island. And we do take people, obviously, from off-island that land there that can store a plane overnight. Uh, and do pay a fee uh for that purpose. Uh, video surveillance equipment may be installed to monitor runway and ac- and activity activities remotely via computer. Um, question. Ha- has has this happened at all? Uh, that was one of my questions. Uh, do we have any any remote cameras down there? As it pertains to added security and to Assistant Department of Homeland Security. But that was one question. Um, our main concern for going down there, obviously, was about the maintenance of the property. If Amber puts up the 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 pictures now, you can see that the grasslands on the airstrips. Are very well maintained. Now, this is just a sitting area, a couple of chairs, old chairs, kind of sitting out with the name of the airport right there. Um, moving right along. This is uh the Mayflower, uh, this uh, this is a storage container that's on the property just east of the hangars. Um, there are some uh, there's some growth of some uh evergreens that are not evergreens, but vines and things that are. Starting to attach to this. Several questions here, Jerry. Number one is. When was this Mayflower van put in place? How long has it sat there? What does it contain? Have we inspected the inside? I know we have inspected the inside of the hangar. Have we inspected, since this is on the airfield strip, inside this Mayflower? And my final question is, if it had to be moved off the current site. Is it capable of being moved off the current site? Because it is starting to decay, and if you get up close to it, you'll see that it's starting to to starting to deteriorate. Uh, Amber, if you can move to the next one. Uh, just some limbs that are down on the grassy areas, but I will tell you, from a lawn point of view, the place is immaculate. That's good. Go ahead. Uh, again, a lot of down limbs in the wooded areas that just kind of sit there and rot out, much like they do. In the Shell, like, I don't know if people have a problem with that, but I can see some some debris in there. But you'll see it as you move forward, as you go through these, you can move through them every three to five seconds. There's. There's uh some down limbs around a, you know, a tank there, tank there. Uh, somebody can explain what's contained in that. Moving right along. Um, again, some metal pieces that uh this is part, it looks like mowing equipment. That's been left there. It's well past due. Here's a tractor that the wheels are flattened or missing tires. And I I don't think it's used anymore. It's just, again, debris that's sitting down in the middle of the wooded area. Uh, this is looking at the hangars. There are four four bays there and a and a plane that's outside. Again, pretty immaculate from the outside on the on the grassy areas. Uh, looking inside, there's a car being stored there. I don't know whose car that is and what that's authorized to be there. Uh, just a different picture of the of the Mayflower uh van that's the trailer that's sitting there. As you can see, there's a lot of vegetation growing right up into it. Uh, then we get back and we start to see some metal and wood laying around the properties. There are homes adjacent to this property. So you could just continue to go through them. Uh, that's nothing much there. Again, an old piece of metal that's there, sitting in the field. Again, could be removed, doesn't belong there. Again, another old piece of equipment that doesn't belong there. Some debris uh that doesn't belong there. Uh, that's a roller that obviously they use to roll the runway after, especially when it's wet, to flatten it out. There's a one plane that was being stored outside the hangar area. Uh, this is part of a fuselage, it looks like from a plane. I don't know if this is the result of the accidents we had. Several years back, and this is the remaining, but uh this was sent to us by the homeowner saying. You know, what's this doing here? Why why isn't this picked up? And to be very honest with you, my major question supervisor to the town board as you go through this. Whose responsibility is it to clean up these properties, this particular property? And um, and if need be, to work with the homeowners, we need to get somehow either the pilots association. Or the town or a combination of both, need to get in there and kind of police this area up. Um, it is starting to become a an area that's, especially in the wooded area. Where it's just become a kind of a dumping ground. And I I'm a little concerned about that. Uh, I do think we should go down there at least once a year, if not twice a year. Uh, I would love to be part of that, maybe go down with Joe, the and somebody from the building department. Um, and inspect maybe every six months, just the property in general, making sure that it's kept clean and neat. And um, I'm particularly concerned about the the trailer that's there and what's in it. And uh, do we still need it? Is there a better way of storing what's in there and something else that we can build? Um, that's a little more attractive. Uh, your thoughts, gang? But uh, it says here, um, you know, in the event that Shelter Island. A pilot association failed to submit to the town, where approval is scheduled a bunch of fees. That's something that we we should look at. I'm on page seven. In the event the Shelter Island uh Pilot Association fail fails to adhere to the schedule of hours of operation. I don't think that's been an issue. I don't think C has been an issue. I don't think D has been an issue. I think uh E is not too bad. I think F, in the event the Shelter Island Pilots Association fails to keep and maintain the premises. And a condition satisfactory to the town, that's on page seven, letter F. That's something that we need to look at. And let letter G, who checks on this? In the event that the Shelter Island Pilots Association fails to maintain insurance coverage agreed to. Is somebody checking on that to make sure that, in fact, that that policy is being maintained? And if I'm not mistaken, Bob DiStefano, I think we increased the liability there last time we negotiated. This contract with the pilots association and up that, but periodically. Um, it's something that we should look at. So my major concern with the homeowner and the people that live around there is. Who's responsible for cleaning up the property, making a quick inspection of the place, particularly the trailer? And um, and and reporting back to the town board on on those findings. Your comments, gang?
Yeah, I think the first thing we have to do is uh define the property line, because I think uh. A lot of those pictures might be uh the person that took the picture's property. So uh, we'll have to really define, you know, who's is, who's is what and. Yeah, I mean, we're obligated to get in there and clean up off pot, we should.
Okay.
I would also like to point out, actually, that some some of that stuff predates the town's involvement there. It's leftover from when it was Frank's. Okay. I mean, I think the Mayflower trailer contains some old tractors and equipment that used to be used to mow the field. I'm not a hundred percent certain on that, but I believe that's correct. So.
I I'm and I'm not sure, P J, I think that might be Susan's. I'm not sure whose tractor tractor trailer that is. Yeah.
I'm not sure either. And also, the the down trees and limbs, actually, that's me and Jamie are are tasked with cleaning that stuff up, so that'll be. Happening pretty soon. And that uh little home-built aircraft thing in the field, um, some people may recognize that from Facebook. Uh, that was on uh the Facebook yard sale or whatever um as a freebie, uh either that or it was going to the dump. So some members of the association thought it might be nice to bring it down there and we could actually assemble it and maybe make some sort of a sculpture or curiosity out of it. Uh, that's yet to be decided, though, we really aren't. All right.
Um, just one other thing, the uh regarding some of the things, the pilot's association is, I think, you know, it's grown a lot in the last year. And there are a lot of new people involved. And I think, you know, we'd really like to be involved in. Uh, kind of working with the town to find uh ways that we can make the pilots association in the airfield more accessible to people. In the community, um, provide more opportunities for people. And if, you know, there is a desire to, you know, uh, build a structure like. Lean things up or provide, you know, uh, a way to get things. Um, the inside um or inside nicer structures, we're really, we'd be. More than happy to have those discussions and and, you know, find ways to put money toward making that kind of stuff happen. We're really. Really eager to find ways to work with the town to make the airfield feel like more of a uh uh an accessible part of the town to everybody.
Oh, we're always open to this, we're always open to discussion. If you guys want to. You know, set up a meeting, you know, we can either do it at a work session or uh, you know, you can meet with a couple of us or whatever you want to do. You know, we'd be happy to uh get together with you.
Okay, that'd be great. We um, uh, we could, we'll talk to uh some of the other people and try to set something up for early next year.
That'd be great.
All right.
My only, my only concern with that trailer is that. It's been there for a long, long period of time, and it could get to such a condition that. It just disintegrates and it becomes a huge cleanup problem. If you just.
Might be there now.
Yeah, if you just have some old tractors that are in there and they're not worth anything. Why don't we just get, take that out and let's just get rid of that trailer? I I.
But first, we gotta find out whose it is, Jim.
Yeah, and I think that trailer was there when I was a little kid across the street, because that thing's been there for since the beginning of time, so.
Right.
You know.
Could do, who has the uh key in the lock to that trail, to the trailer to get in, to have access to it?
Um, perhaps Jim Pugh, but I'm not certain.
Could we, could we check on that by the early, you know, in a couple of weeks? Because I would love, you know, one one way or the other. We all, for our all benefit, should should open up that thing up, go inside, see what's in it, see if anything is salvageable. Uh, if it's not, w- we need to get rid of that whole thing. I mean.
Sure, I agree.
Right, yeah, if that belongs to pilot association, I agree, we we should get it out of there.
Yeah.
Yep.
And a gen- just a general cleanup and and Phil, uh, thank you very much for uh telling us that. Yeah, it's gonna make, you know, I I I realize it's a big area to kind of clean up, but yeah, just take a little bit at a time.
Yeah, we try to do what we can, you know, we're busy, but uh when when we have time, we're down there, working on it.
Yeah, the grounds themselves, like I say, the grounds are maintained meticulously in terms of the airstrip and uh. You know, moving it around the hangar area, it's neat, clean, very presentable. But I'm just concerned about the the area behind it and that trailer. That's that's my biggest concern. Uh, some of that, some of that, you know, we could clean that area up in a in a weekend. Go down there with a whole bunch of people and just and just get rid of a lot of stuff.
And just so everybody knows, uh, you know, the town did buy that in conjunction with the county, but. Uh, unlike most of the joint purchases, we actually split it in half. They have half and we have half. And uh, they've made it. In no uncertain terms that uh there'll be no flying or no uh aircraft on their portion of the uh land. So uh, yeah, I don't know if any of you paid a real attention, but uh we would, we all land landing strip was. Twice as wide as it was supposed to be because we were cutting it onto the county portion of the uh.
Right.
Of the strip, so we had to cut that this, the width of the strip in half, which is, we wanted to make sure it was still safe, which apparently it was. But uh, the these half to the west of the landing strip is uh all county property. That's not as maintained as well as the rest of it is.
Right. Yes.
A question, did we, did we get financials from the pilots association?
Amber, did?
Um, yes, but I think we're due to get another set. Um, I didn't go back to look to see what the last set was, but I spoke to Jim Pugh last week. And um, he and Jamie Co- he's um, he's stepping back a little bit, and Jamie Cogan is stepping forward a little bit, so I'm going to speak to him. To get the um year-end ones.
The other thing, just concerned about documents that are part of the agreement that we have with them. They're supposed to give us a ten million dollar insurance search. Do we have that?
Yeah, that we got. I know we got that.
Have that? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I know it's required that they, in the original agreement there, it says we're there to maintain flight logs. To give us copies, um, but whatever.
Yeah, we had gotten that before we signed the last contract out. Uh, I I think we're supposed to get a yearly, so I guess we're due for one again now. Yeah. Okay, anything else on the airfield? All right. Okay, next on the list, I have uh town business moving forward. These are all things that uh we've discussed at work sessions and we're gonna continue discussing uh going into the uh new year. With the uh new town board. First is a comprehensive plan. Uh, we have to put that back into place. What we've done so far is uh, we've designated Meg and uh B J to be uh the town board representatives on that. Meg kind of fits right in because, number one, she was on the uh committee to begin with. Number two, she was a planning board member. And number three, now she's a town board member. So uh, she'll be getting off as a planning board member, but she she. But she, she and BJ will take on the roles of uh, Albert and uh, Mike Bebon, representing the town board. And uh, as far as a planning board representative, Reed Karen has said he would step up and uh, do that. Our concern was, you know, his plate's pretty full now with uh, the situation going on in the building department. But he feels uh, he's in, he, he can do it for now and he'd like, you know, to give it a go. So I don't know if BJ or uh, Meg or anybody else wants to talk about uh, you know, their thoughts. I, my thoughts were uh, after the first of the year, we would contact the, all the standing members of the committee. You know, tell them we're gonna start again and uh, get, just get together for a general meeting and see how we'd like to proceed.
That's good. I mean, I, I, I think that's, yeah, and as soon as possible, the better. So right after the first of the year, let's get a meeting together. Um, and do we have a clerk assigned?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, okay, okay. Um, because I'm still a little hung up on the editable to getting a copy of the 1993 to be an edit, in an edit form.
I think, I think the problem we, we, we've ascertained is uh, somebody's gonna have to enter the whole thing to make it editable. I mean, we can scan it, but you can't edit it.
So I think that, you know, um, so it's Coco, if we can give her a couple of weeks here, maybe uh, we can get her started on that. Because I think that's gonna be sort of a key lock in our, in our build.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, Meg?
I just agree with BJ. I'd like to see all the versions in a format where we can compare them and see how it's evolved over the years, what stayed consistent, maybe what we need to tweak going forward. Um, and then maybe when the group talk about how we wanna structure it, how we wanna proceed from this point forward. I still need to go through all of like Mike Bebon's binders and everything and see what he had, but uh, it'll be an adventure.
Yes, yes, it will. Amber?
Keep going and I'm glad I'm not tasked with it.
Merry Christmas. And happy.
So the, the right after the first of the year, we'll, we'll get that group, uh, you know, we'll contact them all and see who's still would like to be involved and who else we have to get involved.
Will that come from your office? Uh, Jerry, Jerry, will that come from your office contacting the group? Will that come from your office or should?
That'll come from Coco. Coco's the clerk to that committee. So she'll uh, she, she has all their uh, contact information.
Okay.
Okay. Next on the list is uh, town code definitions. Uh, Jim had asked me to put this on to uh, try to get a timeframe of where we are and how we're going forward with this. Jim, did you wanna speak to it before Bob goes?
No, I just, it just was just such a lively topic for the months of October and November. Uh, I didn't want the public and, and, and obviously it got a lot of attention from the, from the community. And particularly, you know, I, I was trying to recommend a, a process moving forward where we would try to tap three or four people, especially people with legal backgrounds, people that have had experience in dealing with these kinds of definitions uh, through, through their professional experiences to sit down with Bob and, and to uh, and to kind of do this jointly. I think the position that you guys had was we don't have any problem utilizing these people. And you, you know who the, basically these people are, we, I've designated them by name. Uh, people that were very actively involved in the questioning of the, the process and, and, and and helping in terms of uh, you know, sending things in on a regular basis. I, I just don't know whether uh, you know, you guys wanted to do that via email and make some of those corrections via email and then meet and come together. I kind of thought that it would've been more advantageous to um, take the definitions, limit the scope, get the most important ones out front. Bring the people in early in the process, sit down with them and work on them just collectively. If you had one meeting a week for, you know, for an hour, that, that's convenient for all the players. Um, or an hour or two where you could just pop out a couple of definitions, obviously in a a month's period of time, you, you get the top eight or 10 definitions done. And then it becomes a little easier process as we move forward. But um, I, I favor ma, putting these people in position earlier in the process than, than, I, I just don't know how much can be accomplished via emails back and forth. I think it gets, it's hard. Think if.
Am I, I, once.
I know we're getting to a COVID, we're getting to the COVID thing where you don't wanna, you know, bring people, you know, I, I thought we could obviously assemble right in town hall here, but now that we seem to be backing away from that for the next, uh, you know, month or two. Uh, at least just limiting the number of people to Bob and three or four other uh, qualified people to be able to do this, you know, I don't know. That's, that was my feeling.
Jim, I, I'm a little concerned. Well, first of all, I don't think um, a meeting like that's gonna work over the Christmas holidays.
No.
So I just assume take that time.
Correct.
And I'd also rather it, open it up to the, to the public in general, rather than having three or four handpicked people. You know, and, and just ask anyone out there that has, that would like to, to submit comments on this, to submit their comments. Um, you know, over the next couple of weeks. And then we'll, 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 we'll move forward from, from that point. Um, but I, I just don't want to exclude people because we didn't think to ask them if there are people out there with something to say here.
Um, I think there's a time for that, Bob, but I'm, I'm just saying, all three or four of these people that, and I've shared those names with you, have done just that. They've taken hours of their time to sit down and, and make corrections on these terms. I think they've done their homework.
I like, that's, that's wonderful. I'd like to see those things then before we sit down.
Okay.
Um, because I have, because I, so far the only person that is, has sent anything to me has been uh, BJ. So yeah, I, I'd very much like it if, you know, and I'll, you know, ask again at this point that if there, there's anyone that's either within this group or that's watching at this, um, that, that would like, you know, that has done this work and would like to have it looked at. You know, they send it either, either directly to me or to the town board through the clerk. Um, and we can review it there. Um, my one big request is that we, they, they remember, you know, what we're attempting to um, to accomplish here, which is one, we're trying to come up with definitions that are simpler and that are more generic. Um, if they wanted to deal, if they wanna make a suggestion as to something that should be specific, we, within the code, they can, they can add that as a, a suggestion to amend the code, the, the underlying code, but um, but I really think that we would be better off starting from that position. You know, where we have something to work off of rather. I, I've found that meetings, particularly meetings with, with five or six attorneys in them, tend to bog down very quickly if they're not very specific in where they're going.
Okay.
Bob, have you prepared a, uh, there was a lot of talk at the, what, uh, one of the, one of the previous meetings? Have you prepared a red line document for review?
Yeah, we had, we had, we discussed that at the last uh, at the last town meeting, I believe.
Yeah.
We handed it out.
Okay.
Oh, you may not have been there, Albert, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll forward it to you again.
Is that on SharePoint or anything, or where can I see that?
Uh, I'll, I'll forward you a copy. I don't think we added that to SharePoint.
All right.
I think it's on the website, but.
Well, if you're seeking input from a lot of people, I think a timeline, uh, if you could develop a realistic timeline, starting in January after the holidays, how are you gonna go about it, where they can find this document, where they send the document with their corrections? And a cutoff date, are we giving them two weeks, three weeks, a month? How long are we giving them? Because, you know, then, then they have, then all of that information has to be put together and then refined and finalized. So I, I just, I, I just think it needs to be more focused.
Uh, well, we could certainly do that, um, and we, and I happily put together a timeline. My, my feeling from what I saw from the public is they were much more interested in uh, it uh, in specificity than they were in, in time on this. So I, I just wanna make sure that we get that down.
Well, if I can, I, I just, time is a bit of the essence. I mean, it seems like forever till the next season, but it's not. To me, the season's right around the corner. We have some mooring issues. Um, yeah, I just, I do think that there's a bit, you know, there's a bit of, there's a, sorry, Bob, there's a bit of urgency and, and so I would just try to set up a date to do a Zoom and mid-January and whoever can join can join and maybe have one more meeting. Prior to that, anybody should, you know, look at the red line thing and do whatever they, you know, suggestions and but, you know, poof.
How about this, uh, we'll do, uh, we'll do January 15th for comments.
Mm-hmm.
Then we'll discuss it at a, a, a work session and determine where to go from there.
What's, how's everybody feel about that?
It's fine.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, I just wanna see, uh, I think it's important to have the timeline, exactly what you said, BJ. Because individual committees are very frustrated that they're not able to move forward with things, uh, particularly the WMAC and uh, and even the CAC. Um, because these definitions are still out there and still being worked on. You know, we need to, and now's the time to get this work done during the winter months when things slow down a little bit.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
So the, um, the feedback that I've gotten from um, some of the members on the SIA Shelter Island Association is that the, the red line is not a, a true red line that shows the original wording and how it was specifically changed. Uh, what it shows is kind of your, your amended, and then you've got to go back and reconcile it to what's currently in the code. So is there a bona fide document that tracks the changes, Bob?
I'm not sure what you meant. I put uh, the red line has the uh, the new language in black and then every other definition that was in the code was in red.
Or cited, or cited where it was in the code. It's, you know, it take, uh, yes, Stella, it takes a little bit. I've done it. I've done the comb. And it was a little bit of an effort, but it wasn't terrible. I mean, I could see, you know, with the original language and most of the time there is no change from the original language, except maybe emerging. Uh, the few times that there is a change, it's, it's actually pretty clear. Um, so.
Okay, I'll take that. I'll take it back to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the interest of moving forward, I'm, I'm just, if everybody could put the extra.
So if there's a particular i- issue, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure I understand, but you just give me a call and I'll, we'll straighten it out.
Okay, all right, Bob. Thanks.
Okay, anything else on this? Okay, next on the agenda is the uh, Suffolk County Water Authority, West Neck Water Drift.
Jerry, Pam had something to ask.
Who, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Jerry. I'm sorry, Pam Demerit. That's okay. I, actually, my question is, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. You want input by the 15th of January, then you're gonna take it to a town board work session, but the public hearing itself was recessed. So it seems to me you need to have another pub hearing. You need to reconvene the public hearing, not only just take input from the pub public by the 15th and then you folks have a work session. I think you should have the public hearing reconvened at some point before you take it to another work session.
Well, usually, usually the way we do.
Because of the number of changes involved, they're gonna have to reset it for a new hearing.
Dan, the way we usually do it is we, we go to the public hearing, we listen to the comments, then we start discussing it at work sessions. And then as Bob said, if it gets to the point where there's enough changes to be made, then we'll set it, you know, have to set a new public hearing.
Oh, okay. That's all I wanted to know. I just wondered where that sat with the public hearing then. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Kathleen?
Yes, um, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, Jim, Jim, thank you so much for your comments. Um, I, I think there's a lot of people that agree with you that um, there are, this is complicated. There's a number of definitions that people are concerned about. The red line that was submitted, um, the, the first document, um, when you guys were working on definitions was poorly done. And the red line that was submitted was um, probably needs to be um, looked at more carefully and um, perhaps uh, tweaked by Bob DiStefano. And I do think, because this is, the definitions are very important, you should give the public more time. You should get, the 15th is not enough. It's the holidays.
Well, I don't know how much time you need. We, we, we've been talking about this for a couple of months now. And as far as, you know, as far as the red line not being enough, I, I, we can't hold the public's hand and, and, and walk them through the process. And BJ said, yeah, it might be a little confusing, but if you read it, you can figure it out.
But.
Part of the problem is that the prior laws were so confusing and so twisted.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think a part of the problem is that the prior definitions were so confusing and twisted that it's hard to get through them sometimes. Um, especially, you know, there'll, there'll be one definition and there'll be, be the, the prior six of them or something that are all different.
Well, considering Christmas is next week and then it's New Year's, perhaps knowing that and knowing the work that the board did on this, you could give the public more time.
I'm gonna leave that up to the board, because I'm hearing on one hand that we're not giving them enough time and on the other that they're, we're giving too much, so.
Well, I think you heard from Stella that maybe, just maybe, the red line should be, I think, um, perhaps the SIA and other groups were concerned with the, the, the quality of the red line. So you heard from Stella, um, on that, you're hearing from me. I, I think there's other people that feel that way and clearly, um, to, to Jim Colligan's point, the, the community was concerned about this.
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you very much. BJ? You're on mute, BJ.
Uh, Bob, which version is available? The one that you and I hammered out?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the relatively clean version. So, so again, when I did it, which was the unclean red line version, it, that took me about six hours. So, so let's just say, hopefully now it would take you about four hours. That's four hours between January 1st, the end of the holiday period, and the 15th. That's a two-week period and I, I, I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation if you are concerned about the topic.
I, I, I think a lot of people have worked very hard. They're concerned about the definitions and I think from the response of the community, you should take that into account and I think you should give them more time.
I'll give them all the time they want, but then we're gonna get beat up if they can do much time.
Well, what, what is the point if, if you make the hard stop at the end of January? And just so that people can have time, people are traveling and visiting family and doing other things. What is, what is, is, is two additional weeks such a downside to this?
I, I, I don't think the intent was to have it written in stone on January 15th. I think we said we would start the discussion again.
Don't, but you have to give community, the community enough time to respond and to go through it.
And my, and my feeling is, quite honestly, if it's important enough for the community to wanna be involved, then they should get involved.
Well, I think they've shown you that they, it is important enough, and you mentioned that, to get involved and Jim Colligan voiced his concerns that he asked for a committee of, of a few people to discuss eight, or six, or eight, or 10 of the most important definitions, and you said no, and, and Bob said no.
Actually, I don't think anyone's saying no. What they're saying is that we, we'd, we'd like to start someplace else. I think that's still certainly something that could happen later.
There, the community may wanna start there.
Why would the community not wanna have input?
Yeah, let's go with the 15th and then let's let this organically evolve. Like, so, you know, after the 15th, if there's still, you know, we need more input, um, there's still a great deal of discussion. We have more time.
End of the month, and if people get it in sooner, that's awesome.
No, that won't happen. Deadlines are, are good.
Give them a little bit more time. Give them a little bit more time.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay, next on the list is the Suffolk County Water Authority.
Um, can I just ask you, has this been decided?
I'm gonna recommend that we go with the 15th and get started with it.
Well, so is the 15th not the hard line that, that the community can still hand in um, anything they, you know, for that?
The community can always hand anything in whenever they want. We're gonna start the discussion with what we have on the 15th.
Okay, so the community still has time after that to hand um, uh, recommendations in.
Yes, but let, let's make it clear. If we discuss this, the 15th. Yes, but let, let's make it clear. If we discuss this, the fifteenth and the twenty-second and the twenty-eighth. And then we get ready for a public hearing and then the room gets filled with people wanting to make changes that they never brought to us before. I think we'll think long and hard about listening to that because that's not the process you asked for.
Well, the process I'm asking for is more time. Could you possibly, whenever the next meeting is, uh, the week after that town board meeting. To give people, because I do know a lot of people are traveling and it is the holiday season and for many.
It's the, and it's the holiday season for the town board also, but we have work to do and we get it done.
But you're the one that wanted to make these changes to the definitions. It was the town board that wanted to do that. And then the community said, we don't feel comfortable with these changes. We want, we, and they let you know that, but you're not listening.
Well, let me, let me say this, so you're aware. Th- this is not by no means, uh, a, a drop dead date. Uh, in fact, if, even if all of this went through and we passed something and somebody sent us something in June, we could always. You know, reopen the process and, and make the change at that time if it's valid. You know, there's nothing sacred about the code.
I know, but why don't, so having said that, why don't you just give people ample time in the beginning? So that it doesn't need to be changed. What's an extra week after that to give people a little?
Just, but, but, but we've just said this. The fifteenth is the start date. If you want to add something on the twenty-second, we're open. You want to add something on the twenty-eighth, we're open. We, there's gonna be some time before the next work session where it's discussed. So I don't really get what your objection is. The, the, the holiday period ends on January first. That's a two-week period till the fifteenth. Everybody should be back. They should be at work, doing what they want to do. It's four hours, five hours tops for, for, to comb through it. And even to have a, a meeting among yourselves. But the fifteenth is the start. It's not the end. So I think we've, and I think we've listened and I think we've answered it.
I know, and I guess what I'm trying to say to you is that many people, like, it is the start for work for everybody, not just the people on the town board. They have other jobs versus trying to help you guys, um, get the proper language, the proper definitions. And I'm asking you as a citizen to consider that.
We did.
I have a question. I have, Dottie, I have a question. When is our first, um, town board meeting in January? Besides after the organizational one, obviously. I didn't write it down because I was waiting for it to come out. Okay, so if we start discussing this on Tuesday, the eighteenth, we'll also be considering more, um, input by Tuesday, January twenty-fifth. Maybe if we're really lucky, we might have a draft to set the public hearing on the twenty-eighth. That's if everything goes well. So I, I think you will have until the end of January to submit comments. It's just, we will start talking on the eighteenth. By getting us things by the fifteenth, then at least we have, we can circulate a newer version on the eighteenth, start discussing it. So it, the time, it's government, it takes time.
Yeah, again, this is not a deadline. This is just a, we're, we're, that's what we're gonna hold off until discussing it for the town board level again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, once again, Suffolk County Water Authority, West Neck Water, uh, draft agreement. Uh, we have a, an agreement, a, a short-term agreement with them that runs out the end of January to beginning of February. They've given us a document to review to go into a long-term agreement for, for the running of, uh, West Neck Water District. Uh, we need everyone to review that and, uh. Any, you know, mark it up, ask any, uh, any questions we need to discuss. We'll do that in the executive session as it's, uh, negotiating. And we'll get together with the West Neck Water Board and discuss the, uh.
Yeah, I have a question, Jerry. I know that you and I received a copy of this, um, as liaisons to West Neck Water. It went to the West Neck Water Board for review first. Their meeting is January seventh. Um, so we can go over it then. So I don't, we can give it to the rest of the board, um, if you all want to start to look at it as well.
Yeah, I, I assumed everybody got it. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward it then. Um, I just wanted to point that out.
Good, January seventh?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, then next on the list tomorrow night, there's a community housing meeting. They're gonna, uh, just, again, they just want to keep moving forward, keep their momentum going. Apparently, there's two applications before them for, uh. The, uh, the registry for, uh, putting, uh, accessory apartments up. So they're gonna discuss that procedure, what's involved, uh, putting accessory apartment on your property. There's a, there's a whole application process and I don't think any have been applied for, so these are the first two. So we're gonna go over that process tomorrow night. That's, that's it on that. Unless anybody else has anything else on housing. And then the last one I have is, uh, the assessor's office. As everyone knows, uh, one of our assessors, uh, resigned. Uh, we're down to two assessors and, uh, we have some decisions to make. BJ, uh, we're very fortunate as a role that, as, you know, one of our previous lives was an assessor here in the town. And she's very familiar with the department and we have some, uh, concerns, uh, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it and. What we're gonna do immediately. So BJ?
Yeah, I, I spoke with the, um, with Judith today and I spoke with Pat last week, the two remaining assessors. And, um, and, and this was actually a similar situation that I faced in the office at the, almost the exact same time of the year. Which is, it's a bad time of the year to bring in somebody. You have to take your eye off, off of, uh, you know, establishing a new role. Which is a process that really starts in earnest from, let's say, last month until May, um, to train somebody. And that's just not, uh, it's just not, it's almost better to just put in a few extra hours yourself to get the work done. So, so that's where they stand. That, that being said, there are a couple of, uh, people out there. That we're familiar with, that have history with the department in terms of work, that might be interested in helping us out in a consulting basis. Just to do some of the nitty-gritty work of, um, of database, uh, sort of, you know, database management, database upkeep. Um, and so that they would just be hired on a, on a consultancy basis. We can talk about those details later. Once, um, we approach them and see what, what, uh, what their availability might be and what, what we're talking about in terms of costs. Um, and then also, um, I, I do want to at some point, uh, discuss, I don't think it's necessary to do today. Uh, salaries for the two remaining people because of course they are no longer going to be, uh, working at the level that they agreed to work. For the salaries that were agreed to for twenty-twenty-two. So, but we have some wiggle room because now we have a salary freed up. And all of that, but, so that budgeting, we'll, we'll just have to look at that in more detail. I think they're, I think they're good and I think they have a handle on it.
But as far as the roles, we're okay, you know?
We are. I mean, I think that, that, you know, and, uh, uh, as far as I can remember, I think it's up to the assessors. Uh, but I think that they're, you know, very much considering, um, uh, just reposting this year's role. Not doing a reassessment and New York State, in, 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 the state allows you that. It's not a, it's, you know, it's, it's not the end of the world. It's not a, a big problem. In, in such a wild market, some people might be a little bit put off by that. But, but remember, our assessments always do lag because we use three years of data going backwards. So, so we never capture fully these, these, you know, crazy market moves. So that being said, we just might wind up using the same, um, the same, uh, assessments that we use for this, this current year. For next year and then get our ship righted.
Okay. All right, thanks BJ.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have on the agenda. We can, uh, do board member reports. Amber?
Uh, yes, um, planning board met last week and, um. The planning board is, and the town is a member of the New York Planning Federation and that membership allows for up to fifteen members. So the question is, we've got five on the planning board and I believe the clerk gets, um, a copy of the publications and things. Is there any ZB, I have to ask the ZBA, any ZBA members interested in getting an email newsletter as well as anyone on the town board? Since we can get up to fifteen subscribers, why not add anybody who's interested?
Amber, just before anybody says anything, I already submitted this, uh, as, yeah, as the planning board suggested. And then Ian reconsidered, but I submitted it right away next day.
Okay.
Those fifteen members will be five members of a planning board, five members of a zoning board and five town board members. With the one, uh, planning board membership with, that will be open. I put my name in so I can move it forward to whoever will be a company.
Okay, great. Never mind then. Thank you. And that's all that I had.
Okay. Albert?
You're muted, Albert.
Thank you, Em. Um, the CPF committee met, um, went over the financials. The, uh, tremendous revenue to date continues in leaps and bounds. The county revenue received through October is three million, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. Eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars thus far through October. Really, uh, tremendous numbers. I mean, they're breaking all kinds of records in terms of revenues. Um, Bob had come on. Thank you, Bob. Uh, you had discussion with the, uh, committee about, uh, transfer development rights. It was also, uh, let me see, discussion about the Fresh Pond. Uh, mitigation study from Lombardo Associates. I had kind of brought it up. I had actually, last week, I got a, uh, an email sent to me. One of, I would think I was one of a hundred and sixty people. They got an email from Peter Grand. Discussing the mitigation measures that Lombardo, the final report. What could be dismissed and what would be the actual preferred, uh, mitigation plan for the? And I, I'd never received this, uh, mitigation report. I didn't know it was out. I knew it was forthcoming. But I guess I was surprised to get this from Peter Grand and having it broadcast out to a hundred and sixty people. When I had never seen it, uh, or I don't know if anybody in the town board had seen it, but I, I did not. And that he indicated in the email that, uh, the mitigation measure would, that the town, the town had green-lighted. The use of Turkum's Rest. And involved that property in the mitigation of Fresh Pond. Is that correct or where did this come from?
That's not really correct, Albert. It was mentioned that when we talked about, when that, when that report was made. Um, that we own property around, but there was never, nobody ever offered the property. It was just the fact that we owns a couple pieces of property around there. That if there was some necessity to locate something on a town piece of property, we do own property. Not, didn't say anything beyond that. And I do agree with your opening comments, by the way. I, I thought it was way premature to, uh, send this out to a hundred and sixty people.
Jim, I hadn't seen anything about this, this mitigation report from Lombardo, so I was quite surprised. And then to know that it was put out to a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy people in the town. And anyway.
I, I agree.
That's all I have.
You're on mute, BJ.
Is there a report available that we can see?
Yes, Joe, Joe, uh, Joe Fenora has it, has the report.
But it hasn't been distributed to the town board.
No, no, I think.
Just making sure.
Um, I had spoken with him about the other day about whether or not it was, uh, it legally fell within the thing. And it falls within really the same thing as the airfield, that it's, you know, a water quality issue. But, um, I owe Albert an apology because I had thought that it had been shown to the town board because I misunderstood. With Joe, but, um, uh, but no, it has not been shown to the board.
Um. Right, um, also I was at that CPF, uh, meeting as well, my first one, so my head's a little swimming. Um, um, uh, just what a crucial committee, uh, in terms of the future of this island. I, I just have to say that upfront. Um, and, and they had, um, some, um, some very pertinent comments about the, um. Sanitary transfer, uh, uh, rights proposal and some not so pertinent. Um, I sort of, um, worked through them today with the, uh, you know, bill in front of me, the proposal that Bob ha- has. And, and gave Bob my, uh, my, uh, my comments. And, uh, so I'm, I'm hoping to work with him on it with the, the idea that, of the, uh, suggestions that came up at the meeting. And also that Kathy Kenny had done a very long and lengthy essay about as well, to incorporate all that with, uh, with Bob's, uh, first draft. So here we are, you know, just trying to work it through with members of the community to make sure we come up with the best possible product.
I think a number of the things that were brought up, um, were probably decent points, but really weren't something that the, uh. CPF committee should deal with. They're probably something that the, uh. Um, housing committee should be dealing with as far as what rental rates should be and, and things like that.
Right. I mean, we, you know, we can't, they wanted so much nailed down that isn't nailable, downable. You know, we, we just can't do it. I mean, you know, there are, there are, wha- what's the source of the funds that we're gonna build community housing with? It's not, one member seemed to indicate it was all due to, it was gonna be, you know, if the referendum that's coming up didn't pass, we weren't gonna have affordable housing. Well, that's not necessarily true. And if we get money from the federal government, there's one set of regulations. If we get money from the county, and you, so we can't nail, and that's not the purpose of the, the proposal, Bob, that you have. The purpose is just to be able to transfer sanitary rights so that we have the freedom to use them in the future. It's, it's, it's pretty simple and it doesn't open up a floodgate of, of high-rise buildings. It just isn't, you know, all that fear out there, which I certainly understand, I, I think is a little bit misplaced in this, in this particular instance. But as I said, there were some really good points and, and I, I've given you my, um, take on them.
Yeah, I think that the main part about this, uh, about that legislation is that, um. We want to start being able to accumulate the credits. I, I, I don't see us using any of them in the near future. But we want to make sure we don't lose another year or so of being able to accumulate them. And unfortunately, we can't just pass a law saying that we're gonna accumulate credits. The state wants the whole thing at once.
Yes, yes, indeed.
My biggest concern, uh, from watching that meeting or the recording of that meeting was, uh. Why did they spend so much time talking about affordable housing?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um, is it, am I, am I?
Albert, you're done?
Are you done, Albert?
Yeah, I'm done. Yes. Okay, go ahead BJ.
All right, so, cause, um, also I just wanted to bring up, um, Marissa emailed us from the Senior Citizen Center about this car donation. Should we discuss that here?
Yeah, we have, we don't want, we don't, we don't want any car donations.
No?
No.
All right.
Very nice, very nice, uh, thought, but, uh, it's just somebody said, we're trying to get away from, uh, using used cars for, uh.
All right. Okay, um, and so, uh, so let me just add real quickly if I can, the WAC, it was what a great meeting. Peter Grand is a, uh, runs a tight ship. Um, and so a lot was accomplished. Um, but I, nothing that I, I, you know, a good year for precipitation. Um, they, they discussed in detail as well. The, um, the new sewer proposal, sewer district proposal, and I think we've covered most of that. Um, the good news is that, um, the US Geological, uh, Society, is that what the S stands for, USGS?
Yes.
Survey, survey.
Survey, sorry.
So, um, yeah, they, um, the, the, in the new contract, uh, we have thirteen wells that are sort of, uh, monitored. On a spotty or, or regular but not continual basis that they, so this year we wanted to add one real-time well. Uh, for an additional one thousand dollars, uh, to a twenty thousand dollar contract. And the USGS said, well, they would like to use us as a test site and they would monitor on a continual live stream. Sort of basis, all thirteen wells for that one thousand dollars additional.
Wow.
I know, it's a gift. And, um, and so we're, I think we'll accept that gift. And, uh, Peter is gonna work, Peter Brand and the rest of the committee will work on the details of that in terms of contract and, and all of that. But, but I think that's really good news. That gives us the opportunity to map in real time against precipitation and, you know. Uh, just a, a bunch of variables that are important. So there you have it. That was the news.
Good. Jim?
Yeah, there's, I got a hold of the CAC final report from, uh, meeting last week. I'll disseminate it to the town board for your review. Second item, recycling roof. I want to thank the patients of the community. Been a tough go the last two or three months with the mess around the recycling equipment. But it's getting there. So the, just to get everybody up to speed, if you haven't been there, the initial paving, the base coat has been put in. We're looking at the grading over the winter times of the final coat of the paving at the recycling center will not happen till next spring. This gives us an opportunity during the winter time to see how the water flows down from the gate down and we want to make sure that we keep it away, totally away from the recycling equipment itself. One point of clarification, probably my fault more than anybody's, the solar panels on the roof of the, of the building, that's probably not going to happen, Jerry, because having now taken a look more closely at the material that's used, the actual roofing material, I don't think that would support solar panels. In fact, I, I don't think you could safely walk on that roof. You know, unless you're walking over a beam. You know, it's, it's just not, I, I think you would dent them. They're not, they're not designed, they're not designed for the purpose. So if we do have any, just to remind the town board, we want to go green. We do want to eventually be able to generate some electricity for those machines. Would have to do it at an alternate site, not the roof, but somewhere else on premise at the recycling center if we wanted to do that. So maybe who's ever in charge of Green Logic, Green options, might want to take a look at that possible options of, of what we could do there, where we could locate panels to be able to support those systems and maybe work with Brian Sherman on that. Conroy contract, contact. Bob, were we able to get anybody to initiate those registered letters to Mr. Conroy?
Pardon me?
The process server.
No, I've basically just found somebody that we'll be able to use. So we're going to, we should be, get that out to him next week.
All right. I, I just want to stay on top of that.
Yeah, Chris, he was going to do it, but he actually, but since he's retired now, I just kind of did it myself.
Bob, can you put that on you, Bob, can you put that on your calendar to bring that up next town board meeting? Tell us where we're at. Thanks.
Yep. Jerry, Kevin McDonnell and I did speak for a better part of about a half hour last week. I know you were, you were under the weather also. So what we, what he strictly wanted from us was our new IA requirements, our new legislation. So I went in and got them from Judy. Judy faxed it to him. He disseminated to other people in the, in the nature conservancy and, and other colleagues that work with him and the iconic estuary partnership. So he would request that we would be able to meet sometime in the early part of January with you, me and Joe and anybody else that you deem necessary. And it's about funding opportunities. So I, I said, you know, I would pass that along to you. You figure out time, place. You probably do it remotely. And schedule a meeting, a meeting with him.
Okay.
Okay. You, you asked me to go over the skate park over in Greenport. I did. I disseminated those pictures today. Those 20 pictures from over at the, I, I know, maybe there were a dozen pictures or so, maybe 16 at the Greenport skating park. Bob, one of the things, particularly on this, they only have one sign, Jerry. They have five things on it. The top one says skate at your own risk. That's like swim at your own risk. Is that even viable anymore in legal terms? Where on a sign, you can put things like skate at your own risk or swim at your own risk? Is that something that anybody should put on a sign?
You can put them there. They have no particular effect.
Okay.
On liability anyway.
Okay. And, and they have the, they have the typical things about drug, alcohol, profanity. They have the things about helmet pads and gear are strongly recommended. The park is open just like ours is from dawn to dusk. The second thing that they had though, Jerry, that we don't have is the, this area is under 24-hour video surveillance. I don't know who does that surveillance at the park, but the fact of the matter is it's not right out at the street like ours is. It's back set back maybe about 150 feet from the roadway. If a kid was in there skateboarding by himself and he ended up getting hurt, how would anybody know? And that was a concern that I had even at our park. That, you know, especially with young kids going in there without adult supervision. So I think Jerry and I and Brian on a Saturday about a month ago went over to the, our park and looked at it. And obviously, Bob, I think you need to be part of this as well as Brian and Jerry and I and, and maybe Kim, because somehow or other, if you take a look at our rules and regulations, the first thing it says on there, it says all skateboarders must have membership application and a waiver on file with the recreation department before they enter the skateboard spot. All others will be considered trespassing. Now, I don't know if we actually enforce that or whether you know, Bethany actually knows that that's her responsibility to make sure that, that all skateboarders have a membership application on file. It then goes on to say, talks about helmets, elbow, knee pads are required. Doesn't say recommended. Ours says required, and I think that's very good. Skateboarding is a hazardous recreational activity. Skateboarders skate at their own risk of being injured. The town of Shelter Island will not be liable for injuries. You know, again, Bob, that, that's why I think you need to look at the, the signage there and you need to maybe make recommendations as we move forward. My recommendation always has been, especially for young kids, 12 years of age or younger, that they must be accompanied by a parent in, in there. For the older kids, maybe it's, it's not realistic that you're going to get a parent supervision down there, but the fact of the matter is just like in Greenport, there is nobody physically stationed during hours of operation. There is no surveillance camera at the park. So if a kid went in there and a kid ended up getting injured, would that child even be seen from the roadway as somebody drives by? To me, skateboarding has always been, it's like what we deemed in physical education, the trampoline. If you want to go back to the 50s and 60s and 70s, every phys ed program had a trampoline. They don't anymore. In track and field, we used to have the, the pole vault. That, that was right up there with the discus of people getting injured, but the pole vault ended up with, you know, you had to look at the liability. We assigned a teacher to, you know, to, to spot. Can you imagine a kid upside down that's 175 pounds coming back at you? You know, upside down, you catching them before they hit the ground? Because the padding doesn't extend where they necessarily will fall. So I think we really have to take a hard look at the skateboard park. And we have to look at the signage. We have to look at the condition. You have to look at the hours of operation. And we've got to look at possible surveillance of the park when it's being occupied. It also has been a hangout. And there's been some things that have done to adjacent properties that haven't been necessarily been good for the, you know, image for the town. Brian discussed those with the supervisor. I prefer not to put them out on the wavelengths, but there's been some property damage and, and, and even going on to the recycling property and some damage there. So I, I just think it's an area that needs to be closer scrutiny as we move forward. That's for sure. The last thing I have is that last week Stella and I and Joe met with Joyce Novak. And, and, and pretty much she was, the, the meeting was designed for twofold. Number one is to bring Joyce up to, to speed. Joyce, obviously being a part of the iconic estuary partnership, bringing up, up to speed on what's transpired, particularly in the last 12 months. And she was unaware of the, you know, the, the need for new feasibility study and a water flow study for, you know, to protect the wells. So she wasn't, she was unaware of that. We did approach her with possible funding to see if we could get that covered to, in order to conduct that feasibility study. That didn't seem to be all that promising. But she did talk about the funding of the project itself and, and keeping the project alive and well, and that there was a lot of interest and the timing on this project is excellent. And that although we're not quite shovel ready, we seen and Stella was on the line. Yeah, I think she felt that we were well ahead of our contemporaries in the county on where we are on this project. So we did discuss Bridge Street. We, we did make her aware of that. So we will continue to, to negotiate, Joe and I and Stella with the iconic estuary partnership. She has put us in contact with the Long Island Water Reuse Group and some of the funding there. She just sent out some email again that we got today. I have just been seeing the call from the Regional Economic Development Council grant. I do not know of all of the details, but the upgrading and the expansion of sewers that will result in economic growth and potential is allowable. So this may be a good place to look. So again, I think between Joe and I and, and Jennifer, our grants writer and Stella and others, we'll try to continue to pursue these others, alternate means of funding to, to, to get through these, you know, tasks at hand, our projects. That's all I have. Thanks. Questions on any of the things that?
Oh, you did a good job. Meg, you have anything? No? Okay, Dottie?
No, thank you.
Okay, Bob?
I've talked enough.
Okay, anybody else?
Hi Jerry. Yeah, I just have one question, since we're going to be starting up the comprehensive plan again.
Yep.
On the website, the, the meeting minutes are there for the first public hearing, but it looks like they have yet to be just transcribed for the second one. Seems to be what it says. It hasn't even been transcribed. So I'm just, you know, curious about whose job that is. I mean, I know what, I, I saw what happened to the committee and, and when you stopped the operation of it, but I, I thought they would at least have the second community meeting minutes transcribed by now. So just, you know, to get you aware, because you aren't, you are going to start talking about it next month, I'm sure.
Amber, you talked about the like the work sessions where they all broke up into groups, those things?
I, I'll look into it. I'll, yeah, with Coco. Meg, we'll get together with Coco on that.
I just think it'd be a good thing to review while you're getting ready to
Yeah, exactly.
Know where people left off, you know?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Julie, Julia?
No, thanks, Jerry.
I'm fine.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I will wish everybody a very merry Christmas and please stay safe with COVID and we'll see you next week. Thank you.